All right, from the picture we have on the screen, you can see the area that we're talking about putting this storage facility in. It's a gravel area between fields. It's only used for parking. It can, it's not gonna pick up the entire spots. Parking of just the whoever runs concessions down, which we don't have anybody for that right now anyways. That's a big initiative. I obtained several different quotes from a couple of different places and Marshall's Storage and Towing, I don't think team next to Comfort Inn, has these metal type buildings and several options here. This one is probably, I think, the best option. The one drawback, I see the doors are ten feet wide and our flexwing mower folded up is nine and a half feet wide. So we have three inches on each side. And as Kurt said, he had with his boat at home, two inches on each side. So it's doable in and out. That one has lots of things that we need, but I'm concerned a little with the doors.
Kurt's the only one who's gonna be driving in and out.
And he has special insurance.
This is basically same type building, just a little shorter. The previous one was thirty-one feet deep. This one's twenty-one feet deep. Same thing. It's got the ten-foot doors. So that's something we need to consider.
Did you check it all into wider doors?
It's quite a bit of an upcharge. You can get the wider doors on these, but I, this was the base price for these standard ones that I'm bringing to you this time. I don't know how much bigger these can be made because of the way the buildings are built. I know the building itself can be made larger, but I think Stanley, that Marshall's was saying, biggest they go is a ten foot down. Although, I'll show you here in a second with the second one. This is like your basic pole barn type thing. No fencing or walls around it for security purposes that would keep the weather off. But it's a big thing, forty by forty. It would take up about two-thirds of that area back there, but everything we have could get under it.
And it costs more?
It does cost more.
It was quite a bit, it's quite a bit bigger.
But it doesn't have any walls.
It has walls halfway down, but we have to-
Like I said, it doesn't have any walls.
Or ends.
This is your basic garage type with four bays.
How wide are those doors?
Those doors are ten by eight. So they're only eight feet tall, ten feet wide. So they're still ten feet wide. The next option you'll see, these are twelve by twelve, but doors aren't included. So I'm guessing that you can get twelve-foot doors if it says doors aren't included, but-
Oh yeah, you can get twelve-foot overheads all day long.
This one's forty-one feet deep. This one would do everything we need to do with two bays. We just have to, I'm not sure because of the standard thing he sent me. He didn't send me the door prices, so I'd have to go back and get those. This is another just traditional barn, but I think from what I'm hearing, we would rather have it closed in completely and secure. It's only five thousand dollars though. Baller Barns sent me this and the gentleman's on vacation, so I couldn't get back to him. He says forty by forty pole barn and thirty by forty pole barn. And has eight by ten garage doors. I asked them to send me a estimate with leg barn doors, rolling doors, wider. And they did get on here. The gentleman's on vacation. So, but you can see this theater considerably higher. They're in there, but you can see them closer in the paper. Probably the last page.
How many pieces of equipment do you have that are that wide? Just the one?
Just the flexwing mowers, that's why.
If we, if we upgrade to different kinds of mowers, are they all in that width frame or are we talking about restricting what we can do in the future?
They had a fifteen-foot flexwing before and it was not, the tractor wasn't powerful enough to pull it. So they, last year we bought them the new, they traded in and got the new twelve-foot one.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, but we don't wanna limit ourselves if we end up with larger equipment.
Well, that's what I was thinking. If we, if we say now we can only buy this size because this is our, our door size. And I don't know. Did you have any sense of what a larger door would run in terms of finance cost?
Do you have any idea on that? I really don't know.
On the buyer- Garage doors, I don't know.
They said an additional door on this buyer quote is seven hundred and fifty. But that's eight by nine. I'm making probably like a thousand dollars a door probably.
Another one on my building, that's fifteen by twenty, and that was eleven thousand dollars. But it's, it's a huge door.
Well, and they're, they're all over the map too, because you can get them insulated steel, insulated fiberglass, plywood. I mean, it's just, you probably want, probably want a steel one if you're gonna, and probably want it to be insulated just because it's, they make it a little stronger. I just, I just did a couple. Well, if, if, if some equipment, the equipment that's out there, a lot of it is larger than that, I'd hate to be, say, well, we can't buy that because it won't fit in.
Now, that, those prices, that's just the building, correct?
The, no, those are fully installed, put in, everything. Final parts.
But it's a gravel floor, not a, not a-
Gravel floor.
Okay, it does not include concrete?
No, does not include concrete. That's just putting on the gravel we have there.
I imagine they have concrete foundations for the poles and stuff, don't they?
No. No, it's a tubular, it's a two by two, tube. It's got a bottom rail and you drive a three-foot rebar in it.
Actually, they said probably for these, we'd probably have to use mobile home stakes.
Mobile home stakes, okay.
It's a stake.
You see these things are-
Stake with the screw ends.
We had another option for Dave Thompson to extend the roof off of the old building out thirty feet. We thought we probably needed forty feet. As you can see, the thirty foot was forty-three thousand and the square footage, he estimated the fifty, forty foot was fifty-seven thousand. And we just thought that was not something we wanted to look at doing. It'd be permanent. I mean, it's building onto an existing building.
And you, you talk to local builders about traditional pole barn?
These are the only things I've talked to right now. I've been trying to get grass off the infield and grass on the soccer field. So this is what I could come up with for this right now. I haven't, I know last time it was suggested that we look for donations from Dominion and Timber Trust, but I don't have a plan. I don't have any idea what it would take, how many of those trusses, how many poles, how much metal. I don't have any idea.
Well, the agricultural trusses, four foot on center and poles, eight foot on center. Call William Henshaw.
Yeah, you oughta get a price on that, because I, I just built a seventy-two by thirty-two. Trusses, four feet on center. Of course, I, I, I did three twenty-four foot openings. I did LBLs and-
And twenty-one loads of concrete.
That was a different, that was a different building. I got two going on. And I'm looking at these prices. I, I don't have a final, I don't have all the bill, the receipts and stuff in yet. But I think I'm gonna, without labor, I'm gonna be close to what your first number is here, I think, in material. It's, you know-
First back here with the green building?
Yeah, it's, it's got the sides on three sides, not four. So you'd have to do a little bit more there. And I don't have any doors, but, but I, I think, I mean, it's worth checking to a, with a local builder just to see what a pole barn type construction with four-foot centered trusses and pressure treated, you know, either six by six or eight by eight posts.
We'll, we'll need to procure this though at some point.
As I look at these, there isn't a lot-
What, what does that got to do with it? I mean, if we've gotten prices, we're thinking hard to get a price.
No, no, I'm not saying, that way it gives you all the budget amount, but at some point, you're getting a builder to come and give you an idea, then you have to disclose. You have to go through the process.
But don't you, you will with this thing?
Yes, yeah.
This is significant. Right, we would have to, if we choose one of these buildings, we'd have to go to several different vendors.
Yeah, and I mean, it might be this is most economical, but still, we oughta check with some other people and, are you requiring a Class A? Are you requiring a Class A builder?
We're gonna need to get a building. I mean, we, we were just trying to get some prices and, but Stephanie's not here, so I'm having a limitation, but I would imagine we're gonna do whatever we do for these type of buildings.
All right, well, I mean, you, you don't need a Class B builder. It could do it. And-
As long as you don't do electrical programming and stuff, you're-
Right, yeah. Because, I mean, Gary Woolfery, he did all the work on the Harley Davidson shop. We do a lot of stuff with him. William was just in today. He's over in Madison. He does a lot of things. There, there's several people around that do this, but, you know, you give them a call and see if, if they're not in the market or, I mean, if they're not in the price range, well, that's fine. But we've explored the options.
I was looking at some of these. It doesn't look like there's a lot of room for any larger doors than what you've got.
I don't think we're, we're gonna need anything larger than what we have right now. That flexwing mower is probably gonna be used more at the airport than with us. This week with two of us out, well, there's been three of us out there, but two of us at a time using the two flexwings. We've knocked the whole park out in a couple afternoons at a time. So I think, and Steve, my gentleman that works out there, said he foresees using the zero turn much more than picking up the big flexwings. So I don't see it coming in and out of there as much as-
How about if we at least try to get a budget price on a pole shed, which is Class B with no electrical, just to give you all eggs to apples kind of comparison on all this and then come back? And then, because, and then make a choice and then we would go through whatever procurement process. We would take the benefit with an agricultural structure based on, on, on the dimensions that you showed, is that we're not gonna have, have to hire somebody to design it and, you know, get-
No, you, you-
I know you all want to-
Take this and sketch out what you want and, and then call these guys and say, yeah.
And that was my original thought, was a pole barn type thing, but-
It's really just a cart, a tractor board.
But the preference of the board is to have it enclosed all the way around and secured. Is that correct?
Yeah. Yeah, I think we should do that. You're gonna wanna put small stuff in there too. Have legs.
Larger thing can grow legs too.
So we'll contact one of the contractors, just to just ask, you know, here's the dimensions, here's, can you give us a non-binding, kind of friendly-esque cost estimate? Bring that back to the board, these other prices and then make a decision.
Well, you can tell them, we're comparing it to, you know, some of these steel prefab type structures and, and they can tell you, I can't touch them for this, you know, same square footage or, yep, I can-
And are we talking steel, metal, steel building?
Yep. Yeah, steel roads, steel sides.
The side and concern, maybe the foul ball is coming off. That's what-
Yeah. I don't know what gauge these are, but they're probably the similar kind of thing.
Yeah, they're all twenty-nine gauge and, and most of them use a, you can upgrade to a forty-year paint, but most of them use a twenty-year paint, which is over galvanized and is guaranteed rusted by-
Guaranteed.
No, guaranteed. And it's not covered by warranty, but it's a failure in the substrate that move, the zinc tends to move to try to protect the rust. And as it moves away, there's nothing for the paint to adhere to and the paint falls off and it's not covered. I've been yelled at many times for that, so I know all about it.
Sounds like a claim that you've, uh-
Yes.
Well, and just looking at this first one, you, you're paying for four doors. You probably only need a couple of roll-up or garage type doors. So you could, you could put that money in square feet if you have somebody that's gonna build it for you.
Once you get inside the building, you can put the stuff to the sides and two, two bays would be-
Yeah, a people door and a couple of roll-ups and whatever you mentioned. Somebody oughta be able to, because I don't think you're talking about many trusses.
No, if you're doing a four to a four, you're talking eleven trusses.
Yeah. And I think those things are, depending on the length and another, like less than two hundred dollars a piece unless you're doing a huge span. If you do a amount of two by fours, you're gonna have to even go to two by sixes.
Well, you're doing a forty foot, you're gonna run two by six.
Well, if you go forty feet, yeah, if you go forty, if you span that, you will, but. All right. Any other comments or you think you got your directions?
Got my directions.
If you, if you want the phone, for the people, give me a call.
Okay. All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Next item is the I-2. Josh.
I didn't recognize you at all. I actually had to do a double take when I got in.
I had to do a double take this morning myself.
You know, when I saw you this morning, there was something different. I couldn't put my finger on it. Now-
Yeah, it's a new tie.
I didn't have a tie on this morning. That's, that's different. I got a tie now.
Okay, that's what it was.
Next time I'll have coffee before I shave. That's a good question.
Is that the old concrete plant?
Josh, do you wanna bring the mats? Do you want the mat?
Yeah.
Yeah, cause it counted too, yeah.
Yeah, cause there's swan woods and here's grass to go. Yeah, that's the old concrete, but okay. Oh, it didn't last very long.
Sorry for the delay in setup there. So you showed up before you, I took the opportunity to make maps of all the I-2 zoned areas in the county to give you kind of a spatial orientation of where these are and how they might be affected by this proposed amendment. If you wanna jump back a few weeks, as you recall, you had a, basically a full rewrite of the I-2 zoning district before you. One, to address the setback of buffer regulations. Gonna go back to the November meeting that we, we talked about, but also to address some other inconsistencies and some just really dated problems with the language. So I thought we could take the chance to start the work session on the language itself and then maybe move to the maps, but whatever the gentleman might think would be easier.
One thought that I guess is at least worth a conversation, it struck me partly as a result of the public hearing comments that we had. Is it desirable or reasonable to have different setbacks and, and the like in the industrial park versus places, and this is a good example, the one, the first one you have here on the map. Other I-2 areas that are throughout the county. And I, I mean, I, I could see an argument that says you, you know, that that might be something to consider, because in an industrial park, you've sort of announced to the world, this is an industrial park and there's gonna be things going on in there. And buffering one I-2 from another I-2 isn't, isn't a big deal. And, you know, the, any ag land that's there certainly has advanced notice that there's gonna be an industrial park there. So it's, it's something to consider at least that, that we, we have a buffer of one, and I think it's mostly, mostly could, we'd be concerned about the side lots, I think. That rear lot could be an issue, but certainly side. And there, there's an example that you have on the screen right there. You might wanna have, you know, a little extra buffering and setback on, on the side lots if it's, particularly if it's residential. You, you've put, if I remember the language correctly, you have both, you have a similar setback whether the bordering properties are either ag or residential. I was thinking more situation just like that where potentially it could be residential sitting there next to that I-2. So, I don't know. Anybody else react similarly to that? Really, it's two parts. Inside or outside the industrial park?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I think that we, my opinion is we kinda, we kinda went too far here, tried to do too much. We should've just addressed the, the issue, which was a problem, which was the industrial park and, and waited to do this other after we'd had more time to think about it. Yeah, I was, I was pondering on this today and it's, you know, twenty years ago when I first came on the board, I, I had the notion that we oughta just throw out everything and start over. And I realize now that it sounds, it sounds good, but you know, what's out there in terms of all of our ordinances, flawed though they are, they were at least the product hopefully of, of past boards thinking the situation over. And we've been living with them, so they haven't killed us yet. And so we probably need to be careful about just kind of doing major overhauls without, you know, kind of a spur of the moment. And I think going out and, and changing all of the I-2 zoning is, you know, setbacks on all of it is kind of problematical in my, in my opinion. Whereas the, the industrial park to me is kind of a slam dunk. I don't, I see that as being something we should definitely do.
And I guess in part it comes down to we want to differentiate the, the industrial park in an overt way from the, any other industrial zoning in the county. And it seems to me that's a, that's probably a reasonable thing to do, since we only have one.
You mean, you mean create I-3?
I, I don't know that I wanna go that far. I, I'd be willing to go as far as to say, except for have a setback that could, could include, except for the industrial park and have a smaller number there. I think that's the only, only difference that I saw going, going through here that, that's worth considering. And it's, and it's largely because of the potential for a residential. I didn't go through all of these enough to see if there's any residential close by. There are a couple of places in here. There are some. And, and I would be considered about protecting those. But if you've got an industrial thing and somebody says, well, I wanna put a residential next to it, they know what they're buying into. And it's not like, you know, it's, I mean, if I've gotta put a residential thing next to an industrial, I would, within my residential zoning, I would put my own buffer in.
Yeah. I'm only concerned about we're in an existing situation where there's-
Yeah, they've got some, there's residential.
The, the few, the few areas that we have like that, I will say that was land that was rezoned from industrial to residential. The residential came after the-
Really?
Well, but, but the, the, the residential and any residential or agricultural that's there is, is there with the, with the, the restrictions that were on I-2 at that time. So if you just then go in and, and, you know, unilaterally wipe it all out, then you've, you've, you have changed. I mean, even though the residential may have come later, it came later against what was the I-2 requirements at the time.
Yeah.
So, you know.
It's, it's not like somebody was caught unawares. They shouldn't have been.
But if we change it now, they are being caught unawares. I mean, if I, if I build a house beside a piece of industrial land, but I look in the ordinance and says, well, but they have to have a hundred-foot setback.
Yep.
Okay, then that, then when you, suddenly we cut it to fifty feet, you know, well, how could I possibly have been aware of that?
No, no, I, I understand. That's what I'm saying. The idea is if, don't, don't, don't jerk anybody around on this. If, if you've already got it all set, it's been there, it's been there a long time. Nobody's getting jerked around.
Yeah.
Are there any aspects of the industrial park beyond the setbacks?
I think the setbacks are the biggest thing against residential, is for, you know, being closer together within the industrial park or any I-2 to another one in, in the same area. I don't have a problem with it. That's, that's more efficient use of the property, as long as you have-
In other words, reduce the setbacks internally to the, to an industrial zoned area.
Yeah.
And I, I think I would be happy to, if, if we left the hundred feet for anything that, that borders a residential property today, an existing thing. I'm, I'm far less concerned about ag. I know some people will be concerned about ag, only because ag can be even more of a problem than industrial if you really properly think about it. So can we just change the interior? Well, that's what I was thinking, is that, that, that we have a different setback for property that's bordering and are
Sure, that'd be a very-
Than an A. Would be an easy change.
Well, I, I'm-
Cause one could argue the A, some of the A is already resident. I mean, I see some now that look like lots.
Yeah. I mean, I, I don't, I don't, yeah, it's one thing to say if it's a, if it's a field full of cows, the cows are not gonna be offended. But a lot of agricultural land is in fact residential land.
A lot.
But I mean, you also have, I mean, you know, this is the, as far as I'm concerned, the six hundred pound elephant in the room.
Which one is that you're looking at?
It's, it's the old brick plant.
Oh.
I mean, I'm not sure what the county would really, what industry would suddenly find that attractive if they had fifty-foot setbacks instead of a hundred-foot setbacks. It's several hundred acres. I mean, I, you know, I don't know how much it is. There's three hundred acres. So, so it's not as though they're cramped for a space there.
What their proposal to have that rezoned?
Nothing ever came to our way. I had to remember.
Discussion.
I remember that. Yeah, I, I will add too, I didn't include, there's one missing these maps. It's Aerojet. Aerojet's S U P specifies a two-hundred-foot buffer. So they're largely unaffected by this change. So I didn't include them here.
Well, they're blowing up things there.
Slightly minimum two hundred foot. I, I just, I have our job getting enthusiastic about going and retroactively changing this when, as far as I can tell, there isn't a problem. The problem was in the industrial park. There is, there's not a problem outside the industrial park. There isn't a problem that we're actually fixing. We're sort of a theoretical problem, or if, if this might be an issue at some point. I would rather address this on a, you know, on a, on a much more careful basis than just going in and saying, well, all I-2 zoning, we're gonna give, we're gonna, we're gonna cut setbacks fifty feet or whatever.
And even with the industrial park, you could just do it interior.
If, if it ain't broke, don't break it.
Do I need, is there a concern for the exterior boundaries on the industrial park?
Yeah, we're just, it's two business prospects that were, I don't wanna use the term banking on, banking on this amendment, but they were producing site plans with this amendment in mind. That, that's on them.
They were evaluating their expansion.
Okay, all right. Does it, is it, is the issue property that borders a state road or borders some other?
Ag zone.
Trying to think which, you don't have the industrial park here, do you?
It's, uh, it should be on Orange, so.
Do you know which? Back near the very back.
It's a bit of third from the last, I believe.
Yeah. That's, that's the town of Orange.
Because these plans are being evaluated by these businesses.
Oh, there it is, okay.
And there was the other thing too, that I, I think Tom had mentioned previously, is we have a couple of illegal bearings that were granted and this would clean those up. A smaller problem, but a problem nonetheless.
Or didn't follow appropriate procedure.
Well, you've got around the industrial park, you've got agricultural and you've got R1. And you've got what I guess is agricultural, but which is actually residential.
Which is the boundary that, that's causing issue, cause on the backside, it's railroad track. We've completed that. And then you have, you know, six forty-seven. Is it?
It's that southern boundary.
Southern bound, okay.
Where that A is.
Okay.
And I'll, I'll just, I'll just add for clarification. The, the amendment before you is the recommendation of the planning commission. I'll just reiterate, we did- Um, I'll just reiterate, we did give them the option. You can either choose the setback regulations or you can choose the full rewrite. They chose to recommend a full rewrite, so. Um, that certainly doesn't mean the board has to accept the amendment as presented.
Where do we want to go?
This wouldn't rise to where we have to re-advertise, right?
Shouldn't.
All those two, the, the border of the ag back there, what, what's the setback on those? Doesn't look like it's very much.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it looks like about five.
Those are both for granted variances in the minus.
Oh, those were the ones, okay.
Is it the industrial park?
Twenty-five feet.
That's when we had administrative variances.
Correct.
Okay.
Which we no longer have.
And then your residential properties on the northwest side. Kind of church and several other things. But I guess I, 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 I would feel comfortable, you know, reducing these setbacks. Certainly in the industrial park. It's sort of hard to argue after twenty years or so of meeting here that.
How do you feel about that, that?
No, yeah, I, I'm, I'm all for reducing it in the industrial park.
Do you?
Yeah, that's, that's fine with me. I think that, that was the crux of the problem we started with, so.
As opposed to the entire I two zoning?
Yeah. I said, anything interior, I have, I have no issue in letting people build closer together. It's, it's an effective use of.
Industrial.
Broken, expensive property, but. Outside borders, no, uh, like Mark said, people have built with expectation of, of what they had. They suddenly find their compressor sitting fifty feet away, that's, that's not something I would want at my door either. Don't really want them a hundred feet away, but.
And I, I guess the other comment I would make is that in terms of some of the other provisions, uh, that deal with, uh. You know, what was the one I found before? Lumber, lumber yards and sawmills where everything has to be done in, in an enclosed structure. Changes like that, I think we, you know, we, we can consider in due time. I'm not sure that I would. Want to hold this up and, and, and go through all of that at this time because, you know, some of this, they're covenants inside the. Industrial park, which are good and proper and protect all the various businesses there. We might want to carry some of those outside the industrial park, but, but that one was one of the ones that, that I recall. Giving me some pause to think about, because we'd have a lot of non-conforming operations going on right now if that were.
Well, you can't fully contain it anyway. At some point, the logs have to get inside, so.
And that's right. Eh, eh, so, I mean, maybe the language doesn't literally mean what it says there. Or maybe it means inside the industrial park, that's the case.
Well, we're not interested in changing anything other than these setbacks in the industrial park. So let's just write for that and let the rest of it stand as it is.
For another day.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions for Ja- for Josh?
So it sounds like I could just take the. Essentially take lines one fifty through, I'm sorry, you guys don't have lines in front of you. Looking at a planning commission packet.
While you're looking at that, let me ask you a question about the definitions and the permitted and special use per, is, is there. Is there something going on that would, that would, you'd like to see us act on the, the new definitions and the new list of permitted and. And special use permit uses? Is there, is there something that's, that that would help you?
Well, the.
Address some things that are in front of you? Because I'm, I'm basically okay with those as well.
That's probably, to me, is someone has to administer this and interpret these uses. They're so general. I mean, manufacturing or processing not involving flammable or explosive materials. Everything's flammable and explosive. I mean, that's, that puts me in a tough spot to interpret that a lot of the times. So the uses were always a, a really big problem for me. Now, I mean, if we don't want to address that now, I don't, I don't think it's gonna be immediate harm, but.
Well, I was just thinking that potentially we could address the, the definitions and the, and the uses. And then fix the setback for the industrial park. And those, that would be the, the extent of the change. At the moment, yeah. I sort of like going to S I C code kind of things, just because there's a standardized definition there. As opposed to, as you said, some of the language that just talks about. You know, manufacturing in a general way.
Do we need to do more review of those, uh, of the definitions and the permitted?
But you all, I mean, I understand what you're saying. Um, I mean, you all could adopt this and, 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 uh. And, and strike the buffer requirements and then everything could be enacted because it's ready to be adopted.
Not, not the buffer.
No, uh, not the buffer, the, the setback, I'm sorry.
Yeah, actually, the problem right now too is we don't technically have a buffer requirement at all. It just says you have to put in a buffer, but it doesn't specify. Really, anything substantive, um.
It needs to be more than a little stand hardwoods.
Yeah, I, I agree.
Strike what you don't, or which needs more work and just adopt everything left standing and so to speak.
Well, some of those are gonna take some conversation, I think.
Well, that's why I'm saying.
Buffering and design requirements and those kind of things are, they're worth some further conversation, I was thinking, but the. The, the list of permitted uses, I, seems to me it just adds a little bit more specificity to what we're.
I mean, we're not pressed for time. If anybody wants to, is there any discussion on these permitted, uh, uses? Everybody happy with what they've got, with what he's got here?
Yeah, I, I didn't have a problem with that.
Mark?
And that would also be the S U P's list.
Yeah, I'm talking about section seventy-five forty-two and seventy-five forty-three. Just, just those two sections.
You want to adopt those two sections? Or you want to talk about it?
Well, we can, we can talk about them and then decide whether to adopt them. I mean, it seems to me that, uh, that the new list is a better. And more clear as to what we want, particularly as it differentiates between the permitted and the special use ones.
If we do this, do we need to use the doing definitions, uh, as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, you'd have to pick up the definitions to go to the.
So in addition to the setbacks in the, uh, uh, industrial park, we're looking at, uh, the definitions. And the permitted uses.
Potentially, yeah. I mean, I, I, it sounds like there's no urgency to do that, but it would.
Well, I mean, if we're gonna, if we're gonna go ahead and, and do one on the, uh, on the, uh. Any change on the I two, we ought to at least pick up what, what we're comfortable with. I don't necessarily mean we gotta, we gotta. Eh, if everybody's comfortable with these two, uh, provisions, or three, counting the definitions. Then I don't have any problem with, let's go ahead and, and, and run those by and through again as well. Uh, the other things that require more discussion, no.
Man, I mean, you, you all could adopt these today, now they're set, and you've already done a public hearing and. The setbacks seem to be the one that go under the most input.
Well, there's some discussion in, in, in terms of the development standards and the buffering. And I, so I, I wouldn't, I'm not ready to. Go down that path.
No, I'm not going one, eh, eh, section too far here. Um, it would be just the section seventy dash one definitions.
Five forty-two and five forty-three.
And five forty-one, would you need that, the intent, Josh? Five forty-two and five forty-three. Basically, I guess everything up to five forty-four. Stop at five forty-four.
And five forty-four, there would be a new s- a new section that deals just for the industrial park. Or do, or would you propose to make it a, you know, a five forty-four A or something like that and have it just be the industrial park? Not disturb any of the language that's there now.
I think you can, you can set it all differently.
Yeah, I could do it either way.
I mean, whichever is.
I'd like to make it a little clearer, possible, rather than.
Bury it.
Yeah, right now, you just have lots of paragraphs and it's not very clear, but.
So with that, you, you do up, up to five forty-three. And then potentially a new section for the industrial park setbacks. Is that what you're thinking?
I would probably add a, there's a, the existing five forty-four stops at subsection F. I would probably just add a G under it. For the time being until some future date when we can rework this again.
Yeah, we, I mean, I'm.
I don't see the F.
See an E.
Should be, it starts with for corner lots, the minimum side yard width.
But that's crossed out. Oh, we'd leave that. Okay, I'm sorry. We leave it, we'd, we'd leave all the crossed out stuff in, we'd be left, and you would add a G.
Correct.
Gotcha.
So, make sure I'm, if we do it this way, we, we take care of the properties that are in industrial park and meet their needs.
Yeah, does this solve that set of issues?
Because that's where we started down this road.
Yeah, for clarity purposes, are we doing the fifty foot setback adjacent to ag zoning and then a hundred adjacent to residential?
No.
Okay, that would still suit the needs. I just want to make sure I'm clear on what the numbers are.
I, I think the numbers that you have in here, uh, front thirty-five, side ten, rear ten.
Zero adjacent to the railroad.
And zero of the railroads. Is, is that all of them?
Subsection B, one, two, three. And four?
I, I was gonna do one through six, but.
One through six, I'm sorry, Josh.
Yeah.
And scroll down.
But, um.
Waterways you probably don't need in there since there's not, you don't need any in the industrial parks.
Um, signs right now, we don't technically have a setback for them.
Well, there, there aren't any, aren't any primary highways in the industrial parks, so. You might not even need that. I, I think I might stop at four.
I think having the, the last sentence in six at least gives some. If there's a site distance problem, that somebody with their sign allows it allows at least some flexibility. Sometimes these things get in with, I, I recall.
But I think there's a, I think there's a covenant requirement for the industrial park.
I don't think for sign height, but.
Sign location, not in, if you were, so when you're pulling out, you're not looking into the sign and see.
You might check.
The problem always, we didn't specify, we have no setbacks for signs on secondary routes. It's not anywhere in the ordinance.
Well, again, if this section, though, is just the industrial park.
Yeah. But one through four would accomplish the main objective here, which is the setbacks on the building.
That would, that would be my proposal. You just pick up the language. One through four and make that a, uh. Make that a new section G.
Setback yard requirements for the industrial park.
Right.
As a G.
Yeah. All right. So we've met all our, uh, public and. And, and the changes we're making are less restrictive. So we don't need to do any more announcing.
And then, um, you can deliberately work in a kind of, in a fashion, keep all the remaining items that be more thought.
Okay. So we would need a motion then to, uh.
To adopt it as, as, uh.
Let's make it clear so we, we've been.
As edited, how's that?
Well, how about we, how about a motion says we adopt the, the new language for section seventy dash one. Seventy dash five forty-one. Seventy dash five forty-two, seventy dash five forty-three. And. In section seventy dash five forty-four, add a new subsection G. Specific to the industrial park that has language similar to B one through four.
There you go.
That is not being adopted. It's so. So we need to, we need to say what that is.
Oh, we say G, setback yard requirements.
Say what I'm saying, Joe?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, B becomes G. That's all, that, that. That's the only thing that I think that has to happen. And, and we pick up.
And everything else.
B that is G one through four. All the other proposed changes are rejected, are not adopted.
Anything after page seven is no.
Right. Does anybody understand that enough to second it?
Um.
Or more importantly, does Josh understand?
I think I got it. Um, not to beat a dead horse, um. Uh, did we want to have a discussion on the uses in particular, or we just, we just go with them?
Well, I, I think that, uh, I've got pretty much concurrence on the, uh, on the specified uses, permitted uses. I didn't see anybody wanted, wanted to, uh, further discuss that. Okay, did I get a second yet?
Second.
Okay, now, further discussion.
Okay, so the, uh. The proposed F B is going to become G.
Correct.
One through four.
Correct.
And that's going to apply only to the industrial park.
Correct.
All the other language up there now, A, B, C, and D, that applies to all other I two remains.
So seventy dash five forty-four otherwise will remain as it is currently written, just with the addition of. A G which will incorporate the language of proposed B one, two, three, four.
And I would say setback yard requirements for industrial park.
For the industrial park only.
Right, that'll be the heading of it.
Yeah.
Right.
Heading. Okay.
Yeah, Thomas E. Lee, yeah, you gotta do the whole.
Okay.
So it's clear.
You okay with that, Mark? All right. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carries unanimously. All right.
And we'll, we'll let Tom.
Somebody called his sausage one time, I recall.
Now that we've passed it, can we find out what was in it?
Could you give us a clean copy of this someday?
Yeah, could you give us a clean copy of that ASAP?
All we need to do is go to the existing. Man, that's, all right, that's just, okay. All right, we have another thirteen minutes before we have to start our meeting. Everybody need to take a break?
We've got tons of maps you guys could look at if you're interested.
Some what?
Tons of these maps you could look at if you're interested.
All that's gonna do is complicate the issue, Josh. We got it settled.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I mean.
Leave, eh, leave after you've won.
If you, if you got a doing lane, there was no I two when my father built that sawmill.
Really?
And most of those little houses that you see around there have employees that lived in there. So it was really all still I two, if you want to call it whatever, but.
Well, there's some interesting history, I think, behind a lot of these. I think the one out in, out in Jeremana, I mean, in.
The little salvage yards gotta have some history, get it out of mine, right?
Well, I, I'm trying. Do you reckon? Do you reckon?
He used to sit over there.
There- there's a-
How was that?
Grover.
Oh!
Yeah.
Yeah, I was looking at this going, what the heck is that? And they go, oh, I know what that is.
But it's- it's a very orderly one. I've seen ones that are not so orderly.
It's- it's got appropriate fencing now.
Well, and there's- there's an area down in- in Tac- Tax Mount, uh, thirteen, down in the GWAP, that's I two, that I think the county did because they wanted to put an industrial park down there. Oh, yeah, that is- that's that one.
Yeah, that's-
And there's residential right- right beside it, so.
No utilities, nowhere closed.
And- and there's nothing built on either, and there's nothing on either, but. So we have, like I said, there's stories behind all those tall buildings.
Thirteen is in my-
Nineteen twenty-seven. This is- this is the- Here's round three. Call the meeting order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There are two proposed changes to the agenda. Uh, first is the deletion of item three A, life-saving awards. We'll be doing that, uh, at the next meeting. And in addition, item seven C, required munis software update. Are there any other changes to the agenda?
I have none, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I have none.
Oh, okay.
If not, can I get a- a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, next item is business spotlight. Greta Fleming, owner of Burd- Burrito Baby.
How are you all this evening?
We're good, and you?
Good, thank you. Thank you for having me.
We eat burritos tonight?
It'd be nice. I don't know, I hope so.
Um, I'm- I'm Greta Fleming, and owner and operator at Burrito Baby located in Gordonsville. It's at one eleven South Faulkner Street, kind of tucked in behind the, uh, School of Dance, if any of you all know where that is. Um, I opened in July of this past year. And, um, it was kind of an interesting road how I got there, giving up a career and going out on a wing and a prayer was pretty scary. But, uh, Mom's Place was the name of my grandmother's restaurant, and it was in Luray on Route eleven. Uh, she did amazing things there and had a- a great restaurant, uh, that's still remembered to this day by many. And at a young age, I, um, had the best time by her side in the kitchen, and it always fascinated me how simple ingredients can make such amazing memories and amazing food. Um, and some of the fondest memories that I have were spent around the dinner table, so I, uh, wanted to start a restaurant of my own for many years, but couldn't quite find my niche, and Taco Tuesday at our house was our kids' favorite, so it formulated into two tacos, to burritos, to all kinds of fun stuff, and I thought, this is fresh, it's delicious, why not give it a go? And so we kind of started expanding on the idea, and well, here we are. Um, you know, I've noticed that in the present hustle and bustle of today's societies, families sacrifice dinners together. Uh, it kind of gets pushed aside, you know, dinner table, uh, at my house growing up was a you better be at the dinner table at this time, and we sat together as a family, and it was a special time. And I think that's really, uh, changed a lot throughout the years. It seems like it's, um, an occasional gathering or extinct in most homes, and so, when I was trying to find a location for a burrito baby, I wanted it to kind of have the charm of a home and create an environment that welcomed good conversation and comfortability. And I found that the town of Gordonsville was the perfect spot for that. It had lots of charm. And, um, so I found a lovely little spot, and even though I'm kind of hidden away, I just kind of thought, well, they'll hear about the food, it's gonna be good, they'll come, they'll find me. Um, so over time, you know, uh, we've built, uh, a nice group of people that continue to come back in lots of new phases, so it's working, which is reassuring. Um, I made a- created a made-to-order menu, so it's not like your typical restaurant where you come in and you sit down with a menu and you have a waitress. You come right to me, which is fun, and, uh, you fill out one of these sheets. So it's, um, you know, it's exactly how you want things, which, uh, makes for great interaction, and also with allergies and, uh, trust me, lots of people have tons of allergies, it- it gives them an opportunity to only uh, put in their meal exactly what they want, so there's really no room for error, which is great. Um, they can pick from a burrito, of course, and put it in one of my four wraps. So we have a white flour, we have a cheddar jalapeno, we have a wheat and a spinach or a wrap. Um, they can choose a taco trio, which is three soft tacos. We have a bowl, uh, they can do a rice base, uh, if they'd like to have the ingredients of a burrito, they can eat with a fork, or lettuce if they would like to free their own salad. And we have a nachos granding. We also have a kids' meal as well, and then you would pick your meat, and then all the toppings at the bottom are included in the price, so they get to go through and pick all of or none of the toppings that they want in or on, uh, their selection. And then, of course, we have some sides. We do a amazing homemade guacamole and, uh, a great queso that everyone seems to really enjoy and love. And, um, I definitely look forward to the summer weather, um, as today we got a little sample of. But, uh, last year in July, um, I used Facebook, which has been really my biggest form of advertisement. I first-time business owner, had no clue how expensive advertising was. It's pretty tough, so I had to kind of find other avenues to advertise, and Facebook has been a great one for me. Um, anyway, I used it to local for the, um, locally to advertise for the need for local produce. And, uh, really reached out to Gordonsville residents and Orange County residents, um, and for the entire summer, and I, um, close to the beginning of the winter, I purchased all my tomatoes, cilantro, peppers, some onions, some lettuce, um, all from Orange County residents. And, uh, it felt amazing, um, you know, making purchases from the very customers that were keeping my restaurant alive and well. So it was a- it was a neat experience, and I look forward to that again. Um, it, you know, Gordonsville truly has a small-town community feel, and it's filled with such gracious and caring people. Um, and I hope that, uh, my restaurant will bring a lot more people and that, you know, people can make many memories around these tables that I have. I look forward to meeting new people, uh, and continuing to make new relationships in the community, so. Thank you so much for having me.
Does anybody have any questions?
Interesting, you- I enjoyed your comment about the, uh, the family gathering for dinner, that- that is a rare event, I think, in most families anymore. But the- the menu that you have and the way that you're, uh, have formatted yourself, it seems to me the ideal, uh, sort of substitute, if you will, in terms of a carryout, that- that mom or dad or whomever could stop by and pick up foods that are, you know, good- good for you, good- good tasting and good for you, and- and, you know, you might pass it out to people doing eight different things, but at least it's- it's a start, so I- I would guess that your carryout potential is- is quite high.
Yeah, we do do a lot of carryout, and especially for being across from the dance school has really helped, and, uh, I didn't know much about the dance school, but I know a lot about it now, and all the mothers who are running eighty different directions, uh, come in there, you know, at least once or twice a week and grab dinner, and you're right, um, the way the menu is set up is- is kind of unique, and the fact that you can get any of these items as healthy or as much as you want to treat yourself, I'll say. Um, but, um, the ingredients are all fresh and cut daily, and you know, and- and the occasional treat of some of these funny one in queso or having other items on it, but for the most part, you know, parents have the option of making their kids' meals as healthy as they'd like, which is- which is great, so, yeah. I'm seeing more, um, carryout than I am anything right now, and a lot of businesses, MPS and Plachner, um, some of the larger places in- in, um, Orange County have, yeah, they do a lot of lunch call-ins, which has been really great. And I am starting to see a lot of business from, uh, the resort right down the road as well. Um, I never knew how big that place was, got lost in there a little bit, but it's a great place, the people there are wonderful, and they've definitely sent a lot of business my way, so. It- I- I see that it's picking up, especially that the weather's getting more beautiful outside. But, yes, sir.
Sushi bar with burritos.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you guys so much.
Good luck on your business.
Good luck.
Thank you very much. Wonderful evening.
Uh, the consent agenda. Can I get a motion?
Second.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero- or four zero, I gotta- Uh, Department Constitutional Officer reports, uh, drive tourism micro grant application, Lee Meyer.
Lee and I are going to, uh, go through this proposal to you all. I'll let Lee take care of the- the grant, and then I'll talk about the project that, uh, we're in- interested in- in pursuing.
Good evening, gentlemen. Um, I am here today to ask permission to apply for a ten thousand dollar micro grant from Virginia Tourism Corporation. This grant is part of our drive tourism workshops that we completed June thirtieth of two thousand fifteen. Um, it is the grant, we can use it for feasibility studies, we can use it for next-step planning services and facilitary cost, or we can use it for the cost of planning events. So our idea was that, after talking with the participants of the drive tourism workshop, as well as the tourism advisory committee, uh, we came up with the idea of adding on to the hub and spokes that we came up with during the drive tourism workshop, which you all have as part of your packet. Um, using Montpelier as the hub, and then branching out for one of the spokes and making a trail, specifically a trails with rails idea. And so this, um, grant would be for a feasibility study, to study, to give us, um, information in hand to then be able to go to Norfolk Southern and begin our discussions with them about this project and seeing it through to fruition.
Just a- a couple points on- on this. One of the things that I guess this point, Montpelier, Kat Emhoff is going to write a letter of support, as I indicated in memo. Um, I'm prepared to, and Craig Woods has, uh, agreed for me to approach town council for a similar letter- letter of support that she feels would be forthcoming. One of the things that, um, in talking, uh, through, certainly, uh, is that trying to keep the expenses on this, this a- a- at least a, uh, a proposal. Trying to limit, but having one of our engineering firms, and Kurt and I have talked about, uh, RKK may be the- the appropriate firm to do this, so that when we approach Norfolk Southern Corporate, we're doing it in a professional way, in a serious proposal, and that's, um, and you're talking with tourism, uh, VTC, Virginia Tourism Corporation folks, they're fine with this kind of two-step approach.
Absolutely.
With us using as- as little dollars as we can, but- but some dollars nonetheless, and then holding the balance in- in- in place up to the ten thousand dollars if we're successful to move to another stage with looking at this, but this builds upon the CIP item that, if you recall, gentlemen, is in your adopted CIP for this, uh, Orange Montpelier Greenway. And I think we've included those- those documents in there as well, which that comes from a whole different, that's a VDOT project funding.
Have there been any discussions with Norfolk Southern about this at this point? And- and the plan is not to- give me the sequence of events here, I'm just trying-
The sequence i- i- and is to have have the engineers come up with maybe some profiles, maybe some aerials to show how it aligns along their right-of-way, and- and work through at least a presentation document that we then could approach. Um, in talking with Kat and others at Montpelier, we feel that some of their- their foundation supporters may have some, uh, corporate contacts at Norfolk Southern that allow us to then maybe come in at a little bit higher level than- than we would just maybe call it finding a person to contact. Uh, and so what we want to do is at least have a professional, serious proposal. Then we would, if- if that was successful, then we would go and look for the rest of the dollars to help engineer. We gotta- we gotta get their attention and- and this is a unique approach. Want to minimize the fact of having a- a trail along with an active rail line is- is unique, but the distance is just under two miles, and based on the aerials that we've been able to see, it's- it's- there's- there's a lot of right-of-way there, it's just a matter of how to- how to fit this in.
And this would connect Greland more easily through foot traffic and bicycle traffic with the town of Orange, because they have the trail there that comes into the Montpelier property. So you're basically taking Greland coming into Montpelier property, the people who are participating are taking advantage of this trail, would then have the whole Montpelier property to use their trails in their property and see the beauty out there, and then go out the east gate and be able to connect to the town of Orange. So it has some wonderful possibilities of connectivity for us and sports tourism.
Is there any section that would be a rail to trail, or is it all gonna be active rail, you think?
It's all active.
Is it all active rail? I was just trying to remember what some of that looked like, because I mean, the rails to trail program has been an amazing success. I mean, I- I ride those myself, they're one of the most incredible experiences you'll ever have. Active railway, that could be some challenge.
Well, we- we don't have any trail- rails that we can convert to trails in the county.
We've actually looked into that as well.
And that was-
No, no, I- I- this could be a creative approach.
Well, we went- we, I guess, gave a lot of, uh, reliance on the- the national, uh, entity, the Rails to Trails Conservancy that actually has commissioned a study by- and- and found that the- the safety issues, the operational issues are not necessarily there, it's perception, uh, and it's getting the operators essentially comfortable with the fact that you can put fences up, um, and if we've- we've looked at a lot of images of trails next to active rail lines, and- and they're out there, I mean, they're- they're- they're not here in Virginia. Um, VDOT, um, as far as this enhance, uh, this, uh, what is it called, Josh, the- the grant from?
MAP twenty-one.
MAP twenty-one grant, um, is another, I mean, this, I'm not saying this is not gonna be a- this is not an easy venture, but we felt having at least some- some professionally prepared, uh, documents, that are a report that allow us to approach Norfolk Southern would show that we're serious about it.
Would that report give us any first estimate as to cost per mile or whatever? I mean, I- it would be a shame to get into this and then find out that the cost was not only prohibitive, but prohibitive by three orders of magnitude or something. That would be my concern that- until we had some sense of what we're talking about.
Understandably.
Josh, you- we have a budget number in the- in the CIP. Refresh my memory on how that estimate came in.
Um, we looked at a similar proposal, not- not really rails and trails, but just a, uh, you know, your typical twenty-foot pedestrian easement for freeway access and, um, accounted to not a million, give or take, obviously, but that was kind of our starting figure.
That include fencing and screening and those kind of things, or was that just the trail bed itself?
I thought it was predominantly the trail itself.
We haven't gotten, I mean, I'm- I'm- I'm trying to work.
It's a grand idea, but
but-
but there's a real-world setting there that you have to-
And- and I guess the first step is to even see if it can be entertained at Norfolk Southern. And if they're- and if they're interested and will tell us more about that, then, you know, we're gonna have to do an affordability check before we- we- we go much further. The other part of this is this micro grant, we had started out with Germana Foundation as being, and through the explanations, and I talked to Steve Hein this morning, as a matter of fact. They've just got a lot of other things going on out there, so we didn't want to lose the opportunity on this grant.
The grant, um, deadline is thirty-first of this month, so.
Uh, the tourism advisory committee, I know Jay Billy's here, has vetted this, and I think we all have this-
Oh, yeah, it's a-
trepidation of- of what Norfolk Southern would do, so, but we wanted to at least put something together, then.
And I have passed this idea by Steve Gallion at VTC, and he said definitely it fits into the grant. And I have passed this idea by Steve Gallion at VTC and he said definitely it fits into the criteria of what they're looking for. And he was on, he was fine with our plan of the two-step approach and everything. And in fact, upon your approval of me going forward with the grant, um, he has actually offered to look at a draft of the grant application, let us know what needs to be tweaked or anything like that to make it a stronger grant application. And there's only like 21 communities that have finished the drive tourism that are eligible for this. You have to go through the whole sequence of workshops in order to be eligible for this. And not all 21 went through the same time we did. So, we're up against a smaller pool of applicants.
One other thing, Josh, the, uh, the split on the MAP 21 grants are 80/20. Eighty, eighty federal funds, 20 local, so...
And this grant has no match. It's a straight $10,000.
And I think land values can be included in that match as well, so...
Any further questions for Lee? Can I get a motion?
So, move.
Second.
Do I have any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, endorsing the rail preservation grant application. Mr. Miller.
Keeping it on the rail, subject to rail. I am basically here, um, uh, representing, I guess, Buckingham Branch Railroad, uh, and asking their support for funding for another grant program. And, uh, let's see, it's a rail preservation application for Buckingham Branch Railroad. They operate, um, I think it's over 200 miles, 275 miles of rail, uh, in central Virginia. Rail, uh, specifically what is subject to this resolution and, and the request for support from the county, is they're going to be doing, uh, maintenance upgrades on their rail from, uh, city of Richmond to Clifton Forge. And, uh, uh, that includes the rail portion from the town of Orange to Gordonsville. And, uh, we're here, uh, they'll be ma- mainly replacing rail ties, uh, and, uh, uh, some of the ballast and, and tamping of, uh, the rail system there. And, uh, just here asking for your approval and support, uh, so that they can apply for this grant. And, uh, I'm looking forward to keeping the rails safe between, uh, the upgrades of Richmond and Clifton Forge, including, uh, the route from Orange to Gordonsville.
Any, any questions for Tommy? I have a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Tommy. Next item is, uh, county attorney's report, creation of a broadband authority.
Mr. Chairman, at, at the last meeting, we had a discussion on broadband authority and what's involved. And what I've brought you today is a resolution that would authorize the creation of a broadband authority. By state law, it has to include the Articles of Incorporation, so I've actually drafted those already and put them on there. We identified the, uh, the board members, the Board of Supervisors members as being the broadband authority members as well. So, as Mr. David pointed out, you could just take off the one hat in, in the same meeting and put on the other hat and, and do both at the same time. Assuming this is acceptable to the board, we then have to advertise and we have to wait at least 30 days from the time we advertise and have a public hearing before we can take the next step of actually adopting the resolution. And with that, I'll, I'll answer any questions that you may have.
Does anybody have questions for Tom? Okay, when can we, what would be, the date to have the public hearing?
She said we have to wait.
You have to wait at least 30 days from the time you advertise. I think I put it in the memo.
Yeah, right. Yeah, you, you said that.
You have to run it once in a paper and it has, and then we have to wait at least 30 days.
If we could get it in, um, next week's paper, that would put us to the second meeting in April, which would be the 26th.
The 21?
26th.
26th of April?
Mm-hmm.
All right. I don't think I need a vote on this, I just need a consensus. We're just putting the, any, uh, any further questions for Tom? I have a consensus to go ahead and, uh, okay. Let's establish that for the 26th of April.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Uh, next item is the update on the Board of Supervisors priority for the county administrator.
Gentlemen, I've included, uh, several things in, in your, this memo. One, as you know, about twice a year, I go back to your strategic priorities for the period 2014, 2016 fiscal years. These came out of your, uh, biannual, um, strategic planning session. I color-coded them to correspond to my updates and think I'm pleased to report we're on track and completed things and have other things that have been ongoing and, uh, in my opinion, have fulfilled you all's strat, strategic direction for the county. Some things, I guess, didn't, uh, start out or end up the way we, we had thought, but I think the board, at this point, has indicated to me, very satisfied with the strategic direction. I'll stop there. Is everybody okay with the update? I quickly, I quickly say silence.
I, I got a couple of comments about the retreat list, that, that whenever you, whenever you're ready to get to it.
Next thing, if, if this update, now, we're getting ready and making plans. Last October, I had come to you with, uh, or had asked for some ideas to, of topics of interest. Ms. St. Clair and I had a, a pretty good, long conversation, uh, end of last week in preparation for it. I shared these with her and she certainly felt these could be, uh, that the strategic planning retreat certainly could, could address these. And if there's anything else, and that's why I'm giving, you know, would like for either this meeting or the next one to, to add or revise or edit this list.
In looking at the list, I, I think, you know, a couple of items on this list maybe are overtaken by events and could have potentially be replaced with other items that are, uh, more timely. For example, there's the, the whole discussion about a broadband authority and what that means and fiber and these kind of things. And I think there's a, there are any number of things that we need to, to, you know, sort of get our arms around from a, a, uh, planning perspective that would benefit for some conversation. The, the other area that's not on here that, specifically that I think would, we're probably going to be ready for some conversation is some of the next phases in the GWAP. By this time, we should have some first-order notion of water needs. There's a conversation that we need to have, uh, that'll be based on some presentation that Josh is going to make, I think, next, next week, dealing with, uh, planning and zoning issues in terms of, for example, just one topic is how much do we have a unique set of circumstances in the GWAP area versus the, the rest of the county, these kind of things. So, there's, there's two topics, broadband being one movement in the GWAP area, the other, that I think need to be added to the list, but I think if you add to the list, you got to take something off the list. And then there's a couple of items on there. One, dealing with, uh, zoning and subdivision regulations. Planning Commission has an active process underway right now dealing with that. We probably should let that play out and, and not get ahead of them. So, that's a candidate for potentially waiting. And there's a lot going on in the recreational areas, we heard earlier today with the parking stuff. I'm not sure that, that, that's one that shouldn't let this year play out a little bit more before we know what we're doing there. So, uh, I, I'd be inclined to pluck a few and add a, and replace them with a couple of others.
What, what is household recycling practices and policies? Why, why is that just given as a board or treat item?
Yeah, I didn't know what that meant, so I didn't touch it.
It was ma- it was made mention of it in the fall and I scribed it. And, you know, um, so if, if you all, I mean, it was made mention, I'm, I'm not sure, can't recall.
Well, I, I mean, we've got a, don't we have a regenerated or recycled, recycle litter committee or whatever?
Yes, sir. Yeah, we, we stood up a, a new, uh, litter control committee, um, and they're actually getting themselves formed.
So, I don't, I, I, I don't think that needs to be on there.
Well, I think when we, how this came about was from that discussion, uh, before we had gotten anywhere to reformulating them.
Before we reformulated, yeah, that's kind of what I'm thinking too. If it's been reformulated, then we're kind of counting on them to come to us with ideas at this point.
Yeah, that, that might be another one to talk about next year, not this year, so... I do agree the broadband's...
Both broadband and GWAP were, and the Route 15 question, those are sitting there that need, I, I think that, those three could almost...
And, and when we're talking about the broadband, we're also talking about the public safety.
Well, yeah, the next item here is the public safety and radio.
Because, because that and, and the broadband all tie together, probably that's the way that...
Education as well, there's a...
And, and the education part of it, yeah.
Okay, so...
I, I kind of agree. I, I think those three things will absorb the weekend.
Yep.
Okay, so, let me recap. We have, uh, we're adding broadband, fiber, uh, public safety and educate, you know, that whole technology piece around broadband, uh, Germana Wilderness Area Plan and next steps. Kind of making that as a more of a higher level. And then we're removing, uh, the zoning and subdivision in agricultural areas, household, rec- recycling and the recreation, leaving, uh, the scoping of the Gordonsville, Orange Gordonsville area plan as, as an item. Does that sound about right?
Well, and the visitation of the overall...
Oh, revisiting, yes, sir. Yes, sir. That, that stays, that stays. Let me, uh, let me add one other item out that, um, that I think you've heard in, in our conversations that I've had with, with the budget, you know, we're dealing with the schools and, and their financing and their structure based on, on a student count that was in the low 5,000s and now it's, it's downsizing, you know, enrollment's dropping. I think it may be appropriate for you all at a very high level to, to, to think about public education in, in, in Orange and, and what the demographic trends may, or may not be affecting that as part of the strategic plan. Now, this may require a whole nother set of conversations with the school board and things like that, but I think if, if you all spent a little time thinking about what that means, it, it might be helpful for the coming year.
Any information that we would have that deals, that gives us either Weldon Cooper or other people's thoughts about, uh, population demographic trends? So, we understand at least to the best you can predict, uh, where we're going population-wise and school population-wise, because those things are, you know...
We're, um, I'm trying, I, I think we've come up with certain information, you know, I hate to characterize these as maybe mega trends, but some of these demographic shifts that are going on, based on our, our just looking at, at, at data and trying to interpret that, interpret that to help you all kind of figure some context. But I, I offer that up as a topic because I think, given this current budget cycle, there's, there, there are things happening that are certainly beyond our control, but, but what's within our control is to, to, to make a, I guess, an education plan aligned with a financing plan.
Well, as we're looking at, at the previous plan for the schools and we're looking for the public safety and the broadband, all of those things are beginning to maybe not clash, but all compete for limited resources.
Well, and I, I think we, a part of, we start talking about the schools, uh, and, and you, you really can't talk about schools without kind of addressing the overall financial policies and, and the budget. I mean, they're such a large part, so, I, I think as part of that, we need to discuss perhaps some tweaking of our financial policies in terms of our financial, uh, reserves and how we, how we handle that.
Which would be part of the revisiting.
I mean, Jim and I have been working on this and we've brought this up before, but we've never really, uh, you know, what, I, I think this board needs to go back and look at our, at our, at our reserve policies, whether it's having a set percentage is really the best way to go, because what it means is every time you bump the, the budget up...
You got to throw another...
Part of that goes away immediately. It's not, it's not there. So, uh, it's, it's got to go into the reserve policy. And at some point, to me, we're, I, you know, I, I think for accounting the size, we're getting into a real, we're, we're, we're reserving too much when there are legitimate needs out there. And there's a legitimate need to not raise taxes unnecessarily, so...
I think that's good discussion.
Yeah.
And it can be integrated with all the other things we've got to do that are, that are money...
Well, there's a, there's an item in the list now, when we revisit it...
That's where I was going to park a lot of these things.
That, that needs to be highlighted as, as one of the ones that we spend some time on, not just, not just blow by. Because I agree with, with Mark, there, there, there's another layer of, of discussion beyond the existing policies that...
So, uh, some of these, the financial policies, reserves, education, public school education funding, we'll, we'll include those under the revisiting. But I, I, I think we can pull together at least some demographic trend information based on what we can pull and do our research to kind of start forming, because our demographic shifts in this county are going to affect all, all these, these matters.
Yeah, I seem to recall there was an interesting statistic, and I think it was the 2010 census. I don't think it was Weldon Cooper. We had more households in the county with someone old, 65 or older than we do 18 or younger. 18 and younger. Sort of an interesting trend that has taken...
But that's, that's a trend that's, uh, happening in rural areas nationally.
Oh, yeah.
And, I mean, we're, we're fortunate, at least our population isn't dropping drastically like some of the rural areas dropping, at, at least year over year, but not...
And, and a lot of those drivers are economic. I mean, economies are collapsing, uh, they're resource-based. Ours is maybe a demographic in that forming households are maybe, are, are forming more in metropolitan areas, basically northern Virginia, Richmond or Charlottesville. But we are getting some type of, of in-migration because, and that may be in older folks with, without children, empty nesters or retirees.
Well, understanding, I mean, some of the guys that do this for a business may be able to look at us, not just with a national trend viewpoint, but with our particular characteristics in terms of where we're located relative to population centers that make us different than some, some other parts of Virginia.
I, I just, and I don't, I, I think there's some demographic shifts going on and how they affect Orange County. You all would be well-served to maybe start having that as, as a way of informing your, your strategies in all these areas. And what we'll do is just a staff-based research. We're not going to go get anybody to do anything like that.
Okay, be interesting to bore into some of the Weldon Cooper work and see what, what's sitting there that's not, not a headline, but, but informative.
I, I'll, I'll have to disclose, I was at a, a local state managers' conference several weeks ago and saw an interesting presentation by the head of Weldon Cooper about demographic trends and it really got me thinking, I'll say, I'll send you all the slide back, but it really got me thinking that if we're getting ready to do strategies for the next two years, then perhaps we need to at least begin familiarizing ourselves with the trends, because the, what happened in the past is not, from what she's saying is not what's going to happen in the future. You know, the households form, children, the school systems, growth, those kind of things. We'll be growing differently and it's, I guess, we have a need to figure out what that means. Because right now, we don't. All right, on a lighter side. All right, we have our marching orders and if you all want to talk to me about any of this as we go forward, we'll do so. Do you see any need for me to put this back on the agenda for next two weeks? Done? I'll talk to Mr. Crozier, I'll sort of follow up with him. All right, thank you, gentlemen.
All right, the next item is the public safety communication, telecommunications and facility project.
Yes, sir. The broadband subcommittee, uh, Mr. White and Mr. Johnson met with the project team or, or several members of the project teams who also with, uh, Mr. Dominic... met with the project team or, or, or several members of the project teams who also with, uh, Mr. Dominic Currie, who is a consultant. He had been working with RCC consultants for years and, and left them, uh, last year to, to get a better understanding of how, if we develop this, uh, public safety communications network, how we might be able to have last mile wireless broadband lead, lead that, that, that infrastructure because of, of that being kind of a driving, uh, need for the county. And I think he gave us, uh, I walked away with at least a better understanding of how to go about this. Where we are, and I'll let Mr. Mr. White and Mr. Johnson, uh, and Stephanie is here on procurement, is for us to go ahead and go out on the street and to, uh, go through professional services. We're not getting a bid. This is finding the most qualified consultant who understands, one, how to design a public safety to telecommunications system, specifications for our, our, our network, but two, how also to, uh, specify and, and understand how a, a tower and fiber system can support that, but also support a last mile broadband, uh, solution. And so we, we feel pretty comfortable that we can get there with the known consulting firms out there. But the idea would be to authorize us to proceed. Then we would go through the process and bring back the finalists to you all, uh, for, for that action. Do I get that right, Stephanie?
So we're not authorized, I can do, uh, executing a contract, we're just going out and looking for it and then you'll come back for us?
Finding the most qualified that, that can do both these things, which.
Okay. Consensus to go ahead on that? All right, proceed.
Thank you, gentlemen. All right, uh, and next is the, uh, nine-one-one center emergency operations and public safety operation facility. Mr. Vaughn is, uh, underway. He's submitted questionnaires. We're updating the, the base information that's there. Uh, we really have nothing to report at this time. Um, we are, uh, under the Fiber Optics Network Deployment and Rural Broadband Service Initiative, um, I've talked with Darryl Hadfield. They are, have extended their proposals, uh, for two weeks. I think it's in mid-April is when they would have a, a, a selected firm to go to the school board. Uh, we are keeping very much abreast of all the, this process. And, um, I know Stephanie's been helping with some on procurement and, and, and things. So I feel we're in a pretty good collaboration with the schools on their fiber process, uh, the process for the federal communications E-rate program. Um, you all have authorized us to proceed with the broadband authorities, so that really takes care of those. I'll stop there. Is that, and Mid-Atlantic continues to kind of work towards their, their, their solution with the, the, the five-twenty-two, uh, route of their fiber project. All right. And then last, um, Glenda and I had a conference call with our financial advisors at Davenport last week. Wasn't on the Thursday? I guess it was. And began to inform them of these pending large capital projects and how to start working through an, an, an analysis of our debt capacity, how other projects may or may not affect these projects and, and really starting to get an understanding of, of what, what are opportunities and challenges. I hate to make it that generic. And then at some point, come through a, 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 a process with a financing plan. Um, that's not happening anytime soon. So, um, I mean, our numbers right now are not in any shape or form to, to be able to, to start carving out a financing plan. But we've got them focused, I think, on, on a process. Glenda, is that?
Okay.
So, that's it?
All right. Next is the, uh, new business, authorization of budget adds and tax rates.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, sir. Uh, thank you. I got back on it. Um, just, and this is really for the, definitely for the board's, uh, uh, information and also, uh, I hope Amber's taking some, some notes here, and also on the YouTube channel. Um, we are going through a, a required upgrade on our Munis operating software, through the Munis system. We're going from one version to another version, just like software always does. Because, uh, Munis will no longer support the version that we're on by the end of March. There's, there are like a hundred and some localities going through this. Our time to be able to do this conversion is now on March sixteenth during the day. And while we are gonna stay open, we're open for business, it does materially affect the treasurer and the commissioner of the revenues office to conduct their regular services. What we're going to do is the, um, our commissioner and treasurer will have an ability to read, to do inquiries on the system. But, uh, the commissioner will not be able to update property records, nor will the treasurer be able to conduct, uh, transactions. We're still working whether it could go to old school paper receipts, but, uh, uh, Ms. Watson's, uh, thinking that through. What she won't be able to do is any state income tax, uh, transactions that day. We sent out a notice on our, our news flash. We're post, posting it on our website, wanted to make you all aware of, of this. There, this was something that if we had more control over it, we would have preferred weekend at night type of thing. But, but this is the way it, it has worked out for us to do it. So we feel, once this conversion happens, then, uh, I think a lot of the bugs and, 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 and some of the heartburn that, that the old system is, will go away. Right, Glenda? We hope, um.
Are we fairly confident this is a one-day conversion or?
Yes, I, 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 I have, every time I've talked to Larry, well, where's, there's Mr..
I'm, I'm staring at him right now. He's smiling, so.
Right, yeah, yes. Yeah, that's right. I'd ask him to be here.
Why, why is it that, uh, we can't do it on a Sunday?
Well, we're limited to what their, when their technical people are available to actually perform the upgrade. And with a hundred and fifty-five clients that are trying to all upgrade between now and April, that window is rather small. They're not a twenty-four-seven shop like we are. They're kind of seven or eighty, eighty percent, so it's much smaller window. And they're trying to stick as many clients in as we can. We were still trying to finish a go-live with building permits. So we were trying to get that finished before we went to ten-five, so that put us later trying to get in the queue to, to, to schedule a date and a time. And if we had waited, uh, after the ten-five conversion, we would have been paying for a building permits data conversion again, which is somewhere in the neighborhood of ten to twelve thousand dollars. And we would have just wasted some, crammed it in so that we could get further from the upgrade.
So we'll be open for business. It's just, and we've tried.
No, that's, that's next Wednesday.
Yes, sir. And we'll.
Brian, the board might want to note that we have had the upgrading version in our, um, test environment for a while. So we have been able to see it and have people, you know, in there doing some of their processes. So we're hoping that we don't have any huge surprise, um, you know, that the one-day conversion is all will be.
Other than that, the system works just fine. I think it's.
All right. Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, next item is authorization of budget adds and tax rates. David?
Yes, sir. Uh, Chairman members of the board, uh, we're bringing you tonight, uh, a request to authorize the advertisement of our tax rates. The only change to the existing rates would be for aircraft as previously, uh, reported. The budget would be what was presented to you, uh, and that would bring us in line for our public hearing on April tenth. Fifth? At seven P M.
Okay. Any further questions for, uh, Brian? Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Can I get a second? Any further discussion?
Well, there'll be lots. There'll be lots, but not right.
We don't need to do it now.
Not now.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, I'm, I was looking at the agenda. We have calendar, we have the work sessions and, and so we have two of them scheduled here in the next, next week, but we, you all can deal with that there. Let me just say one other thing on, on the budget. Uh, didn't put a placeholder in here. Uh, Superintendent and I, Dr. Tanner, have talked as recently as this morning about where things stand with the schools and, and, and they, I guess frankly, don't. Right now, she is having to decipher, and Alex Bryan decipher, what are six different budgets as it relates to Orange County? There are three budgets, the governor's caboose budget that finishes up this fiscal year. The senate and the house have adopted their own versions of the caboose budget. And then each one of them have their own version of the next two years' budget. Each one of them are different enough. And so one thing that she impressed upon me is that everything's up in the air until after this weekend. And then it's figuring out how to sort through it, uh, even if in fact it's done this weekend. And two, each one of these three ver- versions for this fiscal year, what's called the caboose that closes out this fiscal year, starts the schools at different points. So if, if funds are reduced in one budget, then the, then the starting point for next year is reduced. And so there's a, there's a correlation of what, how this year finishes up to what goes forward for next year. So, uh, the only thing is, is that it's up in the, you know, it's up in the air. She's monitoring it. I know Glenda and I are, are, you know, here and ready to help. Uh, we're coming up with some ideas, uh, 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 thoughts of how we might be able to adjust things on our budget to, to, uh, to do things. But, but the, you know, I, I, I'm confident we'll get there. I'm just not sure the path that's gonna get us there.
Are any of them very severely altered from what we have, uh, planned?
The house version is probably the one that, that, that's the toughest on, on Orange County schools. There is this no loss money, eight hundred and some thousand dollars because of, of drop in, in enrollment. Uh, the house does not have that. So if you think about it this way, is that eight hundred thousand dollars is there next year in the governor and the senate's version, but not there in the following year. This house does that next year. So that eight hundred and some thousand is ba- i- i- is put into the operating budget of the schools. So there, there's a, there's a structural imbalance that's gonna, at least under all three versions, gonna, you know, two of the versions will happen in two years. There's one version that has next year.
But that's, that's in the school's budget as proposed to us.
Yes, sir.
So if the house version, if the foul house version carries forward, there's an eight hundred thousand dollar shortfall.
For recurring expenses. These aren't earmarked, as best as I understand it, for one-time expenditures. So these would be operating ongoing expenses. All right, that's all I had. Did Glenda, did I miss anything? For now. So I'll, I'll have more information available as soon as I have some more information.
Okay. All right. Uh, next item on old business rezoning.
Gentlemen, I included a brief memo in your packet. If you recall, it was January twenty-sixth meeting. Uh, you held a public hearing for REZ fifteen dash oh-one. That was the Winterberry Creek rezoning, um, District One. The board identified some, some issues and some impacts that needed to be addressed, so he chose to defer it until this meeting date. I have corresponded with the applicant. He is actively, actively trying to address some of those issues that were raised. And he's requested another deferral on his, his, uh, application. The staff's recommendation is another one month deferral to your first meeting in April.
Have you seen any progress that they're making, or has, have they not disclosed anything?
Uh, I've had some brief conversations with, um, both the applicant and a geologist that he's hired. I do know he's actively making inquiries into the, uh, Green County Board of Supervisors regarding their willingness to extend public water. Um, I've also talked with, uh, his name escapes me at the moment, but, uh, geologist that he hired to look at the groundwater formation underneath the property. Apparently they have a bit of a freak anomaly of limestone that actually has a lot of water in it. So they, they may choose at the end of the day to go with the groundwater option on that, but they're still, still weighing their options.
All right. Anybody else have questions? Can I get a motion on the deferral?
So what?
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Any further discussion?
What, what, our, our agenda says it was tabled from the January, technically, we didn't, we didn't table it.
It's deferred.
It was deferred, did I remember? We're deferring again, not tabling, so.
We'll make sure that the next agenda has referred to this deferred.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We know that that is.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, anybody have board comment?
Yes. Take one, Lee, and pass them down. The, the one with the note goes to, goes to Brian and Allison. Uh, the Gordonsville Power Company will be holding their one-hundredth anniversary, uh, April second. And they want to invite, uh, the board and county administrator, anyone who wishes to come. And they would, uh, also appreciate and certainly I strongly support that the board, uh, adopt proclamation, uh, recognizing them. That's why, uh, Nancy Beasley is the person who can call and get the, get the information, to go into the proclamation if the board is so willing to do, so. A hundred years is a long time.
Yeah, it's a lot of service.
Well, well, you know, way my brain works, one of the, one of the things popped into my head is a hundred years ago Babe Ruth was a pitcher for the Red Sox.
Okay. The, the first thing I thought of when I saw that there had been any number of hundred-year anniversaries. The, Lee and I attended a bit, uh, a few months back with the Boy Scout troop was a hundred years in Orange. Uh, and a number of churches that have hit that milestone, so we're, we're, we're collecting a hundred-year milestones. That's terrific.
So would we like, uh, staff to draft a proclamation for this?
Yes.
Consensus to do that?
If we could adopt it at our.
Okay, at our next meeting?
At our next meeting.
Okay. All right, anybody, any other board comment? Okay. Any questions on the, uh, informational items? Do we have any, uh, appointments?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have one. I'd like to reappoint George Jancy to serve on the planning commission.
Any furthers? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Next item is the calendar. Determination of schedule for the ten-March budget work session.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, you had, uh, in your original, uh, schedule for the budget cycle, uh, two work sessions. One for Thursday, um, at seven P M. and another one for Tuesday at seven P M. If these were if needed, but if we can hold them or you can cancel those. We also have a work, we could also, on the twenty-second of March, include a work session at the conclusion of your regular meeting too, so.
In terms of the state's budget processing, you have any sense as to the amount of information we'll have on the tenth versus the fifteenth versus the twenty-second? I mean, do we, are we in better?
Tenth and not, uh, because the, the conclusion is this weekend.
Okay.
Well, the ability for VACO and, and B M L and the schools to sort through with the final thing on, maybe pushing it for the fifteenth. I think by the twenty-second, we'd absolutely know where we, we, uh, stand.
Well, it sounds like that's such a big, you know, variable that, that until we have some sense of that, we're, unless there are other issues, I don't, I don't, I mean.
I, I, I agree with Mr. White. This is, it really is all resting on, on how it all settles for the schools. I mean, we're hearing one thing that their V R S contribution may be, may be going down. In fact, I think we're getting word that it is. In fact, I think we're getting word that it is, from what was originally proposed by the school board, which means less fixed recurring dollars that have to go, uh, which then, you know.
I, do we need a motion to cancel those?
Yes, sir.
Well, I move we cancel those two budget work sessions.
Motion, Dan, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We'll include at the end of the twenty-second meeting, uh, we'd call it work session. It'll be just a budget item on the, on the budget, and you all can continue your work.
Well, it, it, depending on what we know about the state, we, we might need a work session on the twenty-second.
Right. What I'm, what I'm gonna do...
Do we have a work session now?
Pardon?
What do we have on the work session now?
I don't think we have, we have a four o'clock work session on the twenty-second. We don't have anything on budget in particular. But what I'll do is I'll add a work session at the very end of the, of the...
Well, the question is, what is the work session?
Oh, oh, what are the work session items on, at four o'clock? We don't have...
Maybe it ought to be the budget.
There we go. We got, we got one.
I mean, if it...
Yeah, I would say it needs, that needs to be, uh, by itself.
Oh, a- absolutely, Mr. Goodwin. We can do that at four, and then if it carries past five, we can go at the very end, so we can get, yeah. Good. We can do that.
Okay. So, the four o'clock work session on the twenty-second will be budget.
Be all about the budget. Yes, sir.
Alright.
I didn't know we, we didn't have any other items.
Are there any other questions about the rest of the calendar? Alright. Uh, okay.
Ready for me?
What you have figured?
Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Orange County desires to discuss in closed meeting the following. Consultation with legal counsel pertaining to actual probable litigation where such consultation in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body, and consultation with legal counsel, employee retained by the public body regarding specific legal matters requiring provisional legal advice by such counsel. And whereas pursuant to section two-point-two thirty-seven eleven A seven of the Code of Virginia, such discussion may occur in closed meeting, now therefore be resolved if the Board of Supervisors of Orange County hereby authorize discussion before said matters in closed meeting. Need a motion?
So, please.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're in the closed session.
Members of the board, to the best of your knowledge, were the only matters discussed in the closed meeting, public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and that only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard discussed or considered in the closed meeting. Mr. Crothers, absent. Mr. Frame?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. White?
Aye.
And Mr. Goodwin?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, next on the item on the agenda is a public hearing.
Public comment.
A public comment period. Let's go. Do we have anybody signed up for public comment?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, we currently have three speakers for, um, public comment.
Alright.
First is Joe Lenig, um, Representative of Virginia Broadband LLC.
Mr. Chairman, member of the board, uh, member of the board, thank you very much. Uh, my name is Joe Lenig, Sales and Marketing Director for Virginia Broadband. We are a fixed wireless and internet provider incumbent in Orange County. Uh, we are based in Culpeper County. I have been reviewing, uh, a lot of your comprehensive plans on, on your broadband initiatives that you're going to undertake. Virginia Broadband wholly supports, uh, the efforts that the county is doing, and, uh, and we really look forward to working with you in any capacity possible. Uh, we currently, um, are deploying some new broadcast locations in Orange County, uh, particularly in, uh, the Rhodesville area, on the American Tower right off of Route twenty. Uh, hope to serve twenty to thirty customers, uh, pretty soon in the spring. Uh, we get a lot of requests for service in that area. We are also expanding in the Somerset area, and, uh, and hope to continue to expand there also. Uh, so I just wanted to introduce myself, possibly reintroduce the company to, uh, to Virginia Broadband. We are healthy. Uh, we are in new management, and, uh, and we plan to do a lot of expansion in the Plamen District nine region in the coming years. I welcome any questions that you might have.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Next speaker is Claire Shelton, four-four-four-seven, Monster Field Road.
Hi. Uh, I'm here just to make a, a few comments. Uh, I was very curious when I read in the paper that, uh, there was an allocation for the airport for removal of, um, debris, and also the redesignment of the, uh, runway, at a total of about six-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand. And yet, the driveway to the animal shelter has yet to be paved, doesn't seem to ever be allocated to be paved. Is there a reason for that? I guess it's my question to you all. And, uh, why is it not being done? And then the other comment that I have to make is the litter on our roadways is appalling. I mean, it, it's really a shame. Orange County is such a beautiful county. And yet, when you drive down any of our roadways, the only thing you see or notice is the amount of trash on the sides of the road. And in some roads, on some roads, rather, the trash is as high as the drainage ditch beside the road. And then, it's springtime, grass is gonna start growing very rapidly, and the mowers are gonna be out there. Uh, the tractors with the bushhogs. And when that happens, and this trash has not been picked up, all it does is pulverize it, at best, or throw it at least another fifty yards, um, you know, into somebody else's yard or out in the roadway, and then it's, you know, spread from there. And it's, it's just really a shame. Orange County is beautiful, and it should never be like that. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Last speaker, Mr. Chairman, is Alvin Woolfrey, resident of Rhodesville.
One comment I'd like to make on that before we start is unfortunately, most of these roads are people, we all live there. Somebody didn't drive in and dump it. It's people that we live with, and that, and that's the thing I find most annoying. It's not somebody from somewhere else. It's us.
Right, exactly.
Not me personally, and I hope not you personally, but it's, it's people that live here. And with the thought that the jail people can come pick it up, or somebody else can pick it up, I, I don't agree. It's, uh, everybody's responsibility. So, thank you for bringing that back to our attention.
Well, I have to agree with that lady there about the trash on the roads. My name is Alvin Woolfrey, and glad I got a good chance to speak. I've lived in Orange County all my life. I know the Orange County landfill, they started to charge certain individuals. There are individuals that use a landfill that don't have to pay. I know I've heard, uh, individuals say, well, everybody pays. Well, I know that's not the case. I have witnesses to it. I've helped a gentleman here in Orange County, where I've hauled trash down after him. Times I went in there and hadn't had to pay a thing. My dad, I haul trash for my father. He's ninety-five years old and lived in Orange County all of his life. If I take a load of trash in now, I take trash in now, I have to pay. Just because I have done some cleanups with some other individuals and, and, and got paid for it. I can understand paying for hauling their trash. I know people have come over to other counties and brought trash into Orange County and hasn't had to pay. So, I think that everybody, if they're gonna use the landfill, everybody should pay. If one's gonna pay, make everybody pay. And the farmers are able to go in there and deposit a thousand-pound cow, and they don't have to pay. I can put farm tags on my truck and go in there and not pay. So, I think that needs to be looked at. The other issue is, I understand sometime back, y'all passed ordinance where you could only have six vehicles on your lot without tags on. Now, the individual down on Burr Hill Road, it's probably got twenty cars on his lot in a subdivision area, and nobody never does anything about it. I had brought it up to the county minister previously that we had here. They were supposed to look into it. I don't know why, but they seemed to overlook it. It's nothing but a trash hole on six-ninety-two on Burr Hill Road. And I think somebody needs to investigate that. And that's the issues I've got. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other se...
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman?
Alright. Well, then, let's move on to the public hearing on the amendment to the Orange County Court of Ordinances. Alright.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, as you know, we, we had a, a work session on this, and, and I drafted up, based on state code, a model trash and debris ordinance. And the board indicated we didn't want to even remotely think about adopting something like this without seeking significant public input. So, we scheduled two different public hearings. Um, but the, the ordinance itself allows us to, if it were adopted, would allow us to give a civil fine of fifty dollars a day. Or, in the alternative, and I say in the alternative, this is probably not realistic this year, clean it up ourselves, and then charge the property owner, put a lien on their property for the cleanup cost. But that only works when you have a budget for it, and since we will be through the budget season before we decide what we're doing here, that, that would, that would be in the ordinance as it's currently drafted, and a lot of citizens would probably say, well, it's in your ordinance. Why aren't you cleaning up? And so, just, just FYI, that's a, that's a double-edged sword. The side one, yes, we could technically go in and clean it up, but side two is we're not gonna have any budget to do that. So, I did want to bring that to everybody's attention. So, probably the, the larger motivation would be the fifty-dollar-a-day fine for not cleaning up the trash. And with that, I'll answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for, uh, county attorney? Alright. Then, uh, we'll open the public hearing. Do we have anybody signed up for it?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, we currently have six speakers signed up. First is John Snyder, one-two-five-seven-four, Chicken Mountain Road.
Good evening. I'm all for what you're trying to do to raise the penalty for trash on roads. Uh, I volunteered to do the Adopt a Highway program that BDOT promotes on Chicken Mountain Road. And I want to tell you, we have had incidents where we've had to go in and pick up five pickup loads of trash in one area. Somebody decided to move out of their house, I guess, and dumped the whole thing there. And this is a beautiful county, and we should preserve it. So, I really congratulate you and hope that you will press the charges for crashing roads. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Virginia Donaldson, resident of Somerset.
Well, I would also like to thank you for pass, for proposing this ordinance. I, too, adopted a highway once, and one of the things I picked up was a dead duck in a bag. So, there's all manner of trash, and I appreciate that you've, that you're considering this, and I hope that you'll pass it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our third speaker is James Collins, resident of Somerset.
Hi, thanks for letting us speak. I just wanted, uh, to echo what Jack and, uh, Virginia have said, that I think it's a great idea, and it's a really good, uh, way of, uh, making the county more beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Merrill Strange, resident of Gordonsville.
Hi, thank you very much for letting us talk tonight, and thank you for the idea of this ordinance. I think you should pass it, and I'm not gonna waste your time. I'm gonna say just what they said, so, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Terry Lor, two-four-zero-seven-three, Monrovia Road.
Well, first of all, I have to disagree with, uh, this ordinance for several reasons. First of all, this is America. I'm a landowner in this county, and as much as I ride by some places, I see things that I don't care to see. The fact of the matter is, that it's private property. Now, borrowing chemicals, or oil, or something terrible going into the groundwater, it's really not anybody's business what I may choose to keep on my property or anyone else. And furthermore, I can certainly empathize and understand people wanting something like this. Definitely understand that. But, as my days of young man, when I used to lose my driver's license a lot, I remember these words very distinctly. It's a privilege to drive up and down these highways in the state of Virginia. It's not right. It's a privilege. If there's piece of property that's cluttered up, you don't like it, you don't have to drive by it. And if you do, it's really not, it's not your business. It's private property. Now, as far as we understand it on this, from the road and from another person's lot, again, it's private property. If there's a problem with the neighbor that doesn't like what's on his other property, that's a civil matter between the people. You know, I currently live, there's a, an old falling-down house on one side of me that looks like crap. But it's also private property, and I don't own it, and it's not my right to tell somebody they have to tear it down. On the other side of me, there's a kennel. You know, a man running business. I can't walk out on my property without being barked at by another man's dogs. Although that bothers me greatly. I have to accept it and deal with it. As far as the rules are, a man could do that. You're kinda crossing a real, real threshold here, you know? Like, say, say there was children involved in the household, and there was clutter in the yard. If social services thought it was a problem, they could get in and handle it. But, you know, I, I hear a lot of people talk about hoarders. Ever since, ever since that show came out, Hoarders, everybody wants to use the word hoarder. Well, you know, what somebody might look at and consider junk. Another person, they consider it totally different. Although it may not look as well as you would like it to look. I don't believe that you have a right to tell somebody what they can keep on their property. You know, that mean you're, you're about to legislate taste. You know, unfortunately, this is America, and if people wanna live like a slob, they have the right to. That's the point I'm trying to make. It's not nobody's job to tell me if I choose so. If I want, if I want my yard to be all cluttered up, that's my business. Trash is silent. It doesn't bother anyone, unless you let it bother you. Yeah, I, I, I totally understand the thought behind this. Because I, I have people I know that, in my opinion, live like sloths. But unfortunately, that's their choice. You know? To me, this ordinance sounds like a homeowner's organization, homeowner's thing, you know, like they have in Lakewood Woods and those types of places. You know, if it bothers you that bad, buy your place in there, where you're moving there, you agree to the rules that that, 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 you know, involves. But if Orange wants to be in homeowner's association, let's say no dogs. You know? When I spoke in, uh, your office, you, not too long ago, I, I tried to bring the point up to some of the ladies in your office there. In this county, you can get a fifty-dollar kennel license. There's no requirement, I could live on a quarter acre, or I could live on five-hundred acres. You know, they were telling me, talk to your, talk to your supervisor. I've, I've stood in front of this board and made that point ten years ago. If you can legislate whether I can keep a little bit of trash in my yard or not, at least make somebody running a business, a kennel is a business, build a privacy fence, so a man don't walk out in his yard, if he wants to walk out in his yard, he's getting barked at like he's a criminal on his own property. You know, you, you, there's just some things you can't do. You can't tell a man what to do on his own property. If he wants to live like a slob, that's his business. Although you may not like it. If it's a landowner, I understand how you would feel. HB says we can sell privacy fencing all day long. And that's my point. I wish y'all take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any further?
Um, last speaker, Mr. Chairman, is Mark Warren, five-two-nine-zero, Ridge Road.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm here to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance to the county solid waste, to the amendment to the county's solid waste ordinance. I'd like to thank the board and the county administrator and the county attorney for this proposal and for your consideration of it, because I think it will really help clean up Orange County. And I'd also like to thank the board for the way you're going about doing it. It's really great to see a proposal with lots of time for citizens to consider and get input. Two public hearings is really great and we, I think the majority of the citizens really appreciate being able to be heard on this because it's a very important issue for the people in the county. Nobody wants to live or work or visit a place with people's yards or porches or whatever filled with trash. Tourism is essential to the county, people don't want to come here and look at yards full of trash. The adopting of the proposed amendment will go a long way to making the county a cleaner and even a better place to live and work and visit. So, I respectfully request that you vote to adopt this ordinance amendment, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
That will close the public hearing. Any issues on discussion on this?
I think we wait until we have a public hearing, get the input from everybody.
Okay.
I will, there's a couple of interesting observations, I think the ordinance, excuse me, doesn't deal directly with the question of the trash along the roads. I'm not sure how you would go about that, but in its current form, unless it happens to be in a front yard or something, the general issue of debris along and trash along the road isn't dealt with. That's not to say we shouldn't think about that and maybe see if there are some options there. The second point is that we are trying in this ordinance to, at this point, focus on sort of the household trash issue, not anything else. Somebody made the joke of a toilet serving as a flower pot, we're not focused on a toilet serving as a flower pot or an old car or an old truck or a boat or anything else at this point. We're really dealing, trying to deal with and define household trash. And there are several places, we've all seen them, where literally bags, trash bags, are sitting on porches and in yards and piled on the back of trucks and these kind of things. So, we're trying to take a very narrow focus in this first step because there are issues with it and deal with the matter of, and that's why we try to have a definition here of things that were accepted at the landfill, that's a fairly rigorous list that is defined and these kind of things. So, it's a somewhat modest first step and I think it is important that we continue to hear from the public on this. I make this comment to engage further conversations as you think about the context that we're trying to place around this issue at this time.
Does anybody else have any comments they'd like to make? I think that completes our agenda for this evening. Can I get a motion? Second? A motion and second to adjourn, all in favor?